Morning on this bright sunny day. It's Tuesday, December 17th. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right. Move to approve the minutes of the December 10th meeting?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, all right. And now open up for public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. Seeing that, we'll go ahead and proceed with our resolutions. We've got the county engineer's office, Dan Becker here. Good morning.
Morning. Let's see, I've got six resolutions for your consideration today. The first is accepting and awarding the 2025 replacement of Bridge Number 34 on Spieth Road. The second is establishing bridge load limits for Grafton Road Bridge Number Nine. The third is establishing bridge load limits for Canard Road Bridge Number 22. The fourth is approving annual assessments and improvements on the Forest Glen subdivision in Sharon Township. The fifth is approving the final plat for that same subdivision. And the sixth is authorizing the county engineer to purchase a new Bomag compactor, which we're really excited about.
Move to approve the six resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
It's just good to know it excites our county engineer's office.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jeremy Senkow, our Senator Engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
One resolution for consideration today, and that's authorizing an agreement between Medina County and Wheeling and Lake Erie Railway Company.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Thank you, very good, thanks. Now our Office for Older Adults Director, Laura Tuth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know what determination made me third, but thank you. I have one resolution for your consideration today, and it is approving the name change of Medina County Office for Older Adults to the Medina County Senior and Adult Services. And I just want to read one line, I know you've seen it. This better aligns with the mission and objectives of our organization and while ensuring clarity and inclusivity for all constituents that we serve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and second, you want to show the sign?
I do, yeah.
Before we vote, okay.
We put, this is our new logo. So I just wanted to explain it. We wanted to include everybody that we work with, so the different bar colors represent the different municipalities, green for Medina, blue for Barnswick, and red for Wadsworth. And then the gold is just the county and everybody else we serve, so.
That's great.
Those are supposed to be supports, not a bar graph or a barcode. I don't know, you can put your phone on it, I don't know what's going to happen.
Are we, are we allowed to call it McSass?
Yeah, I love it. Call it the sassy agency.
There we go, okay.
McSass, great.
If I could ask if, I know it's during resolutions, but if you could just take a quick picture with this for our newsletter, that would be great.
Are we appropriately color-coded?
Thank you.
Very good. All right. With that, let's make it official. Roll call.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, all right. Well done, thank you. All right. Shannon Ryan, our Transit Director.
Good morning, just have one resolution.
All right.
Approving the submission of an application with ODOT for state fiscal year 26. We're finalizing our application for our operating funding. This is part of the process to get an authorization for that.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, all right. Thank you. Denise Testar, Planning Services Director.
Good morning, just have one resolution for your consideration, appointing members and an alternate to the Medina County Planning Commission.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Debbie Kylie, our Job and Family Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Five resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from the JFS Children's Services SCPA Fund to the JFS Public Assistance Fund. The next is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from the JFS Children's Services 4E Fund to our Public Assistance Fund. The next is authorizing an agreement with Lamar for billboard advertising services for our fraud costs program. And the next one is foster family software services renewal for our social workers and foster families. And I believe the last one is assigning authority to the Director of Job and Family Services to serve as the Board's designee with authority to request and sign inter-county adjustment agreements.
Move to approve the five resolutions?
Second.
Moved in second, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Thanks, Debbie. Holly Muirin, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personnel changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one at County Home and one at Transit. Twelve rate increases, three in sanitary, seven at Job and Family Services, and two in maintenance. Two promotions, one in sanitary and one in Job and Family Services. One lateral position control number change at Job and Family Services. One leave of absence in sanitary, a suspension at solid waste. Two resignations at County Home, and one retirement in sanitary.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next, we have Brett Thomas, our Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have six resolutions for you guys this week. Our first one is expenditure adjustments for various funds. We're moving some salaries from the General Fund for Adult Probation into their appropriate grants and their specialty docket funds. As well, we have some payroll errors that happened for the Board of Developmental Disabilities. And then for our second resolution, we are authorizing agreements for various veterinarians for the spay and neuter program for the county dog shelter. We had seven total veterinarians reply, and we are very thankful for their continued support of that program. Our third resolution is declaring the interested vendors for gasoline bill, for gasoline bids in 2025. This list hasn't really changed from our prior years. We have five. Our fourth resolution is expenses of county officials. We have one small luncheon for the auditor for the Medina County Chamber of Commerce. And for our fifth resolution, we have our weekly bills in the amount of $6,142,326.50. And finally, for our sixth resolution, is an agreement for the terms of engagement letter from the Auditor of State for the Local Government Services Division to assist with preparing our annual financial statements for 2024.
Move to approve the six resolutions?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. Matt Springer, our County Administrator.
Good morning. We have eight resolutions. The first one is approving a 2025 mental health service agreement at Juvenile Detention Center. The vendor would be Alternative Pass. The second resolution similarly is also at the Juvenile Detention Center with Alternative Pass for substance abuse prevention and treatment. The third resolution is reduction of a performance bond. This is a project in Hinckley Township that's recently been completed. Fourth resolution is amending the next round of McDAC grant guidelines, really just date changes, nothing of substance. The fifth resolution is awarding a food service agreement at the County Home. We recently went out for RFPs. Aramark was the lowest and best proposal, so we would pursue contract negotiations. This would be for a two-year period, beginning January 1st. The sixth resolution is a master lease agreement with ComDoc. About the last four months, John Shory from our IT department has been pursuing different vendor pricing for machines across the county, so this represents a very significant cost savings for these 15 machines. The seventh resolution is appointing a dog shelter advisory committee. This would consist of five individuals to help at the shelter as far as future policy development. These individuals would serve one-year terms. And then the eighth and final is awarding a proposal for strategic planning efforts at the Medina County Fairgrounds. This award would go to WDC Group in the amount of $34,810, and we would be using remaining ARPA dollars for this project.
Move to approve the eight resolutions?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm real excited about the WDC contract, especially since I'm thrilled that it came under the budget that we had in mind for that, so we had around $50,000 that we were thinking so. And the company's really great, and everybody was universally happy with them.
And they're, part of their process is going to be to be president this year's fair?
Absolutely. Actually, it's almost the entire 2025 that the contract goes for.
Oh, great.
They'll begin, you know, interviewing people early part of 2025, the Fair Board, us, community stakeholders, and, you know, analyzing the facilities and the buildings and coming up with ideas, and then they'll spend some days at the fair, see how the flow goes, see how the operation goes. And so I don't expect their end product till towards the end of 2025, which I'm thrilled about because they will really take their time and invest some time in this so that we have a good end product.
That's great. Yeah, thanks for working on that, that's a good project.
And thanks to Chris and Denise too, because they worked hard on it also.
And also want to thank the Medina County, we have a Medina County Dog Shelter Advisory Committee, and I just want to thank those members for being willing to step up and volunteer on this and help provide some advice as we move forward with the dog shelter and policies, and also hopefully a construction of a new dog shelter in the near future. All right. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right, very good, thank you. Next, we have Department Updates, and Richard Nelson, our Chief Building Official.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I also have one resolution for your consideration this morning. That is to enter an agreement with a new online payment provider known as Rico LLC, which replaces the current provider known as Easy Secure Pay. This to allow us to continue offering this convenient method of paying for permits.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right, very good, thank you. Next, we have Department Updates, and Richard Nelson, our Chief Building Official.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I also have one resolution for your consideration this morning. That is to enter an agreement with a new online payment provider known as Rico LLC, which replaces the current provider known as Easy Secure Pay. This to allow us to continue offering this convenient method of paying for permits.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right, very good, thank you. Next, we have Department Updates, and Richard Nelson, our Chief Building Official.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I also have one resolution for your consideration this morning. That is to enter an agreement with a new online payment provider known as Rico LLC, which replaces the current provider known as Easy Secure Pay. This to allow us to continue offering this convenient method of paying for permits. Otherwise, we can now announce that our County Building Department will now be doing the Wadsworth City Residential projects, as well as the commercial projects that we've done over the decades. They have been doing their own residential for decades and have decided to turn that over to us, so we think we're on track to start doing that January 1st.
That's great.
I think it's so efficient.
Boy, it is, indeed. Well, obviously so does Wadsworth, so.
Right, it's really efficient.
Yes, it kind of will be.
Yeah. Well, I also noted that the housing permits, the numbers ahead of last year too, so we're still keeping ahead in those areas.
Yes, yes, indeed we are.
Yep.
So their numbers then will be part of this report going forward?
Correct.
Okay.
Currently, on that page four, they're already listed, but it's always zero.
Oh, gotcha.
And so that was handy that they were already on there.
Yep.
And, yeah, that'll just start filling in, and it'll all be treated as if they were same as another village or township in a way.
Yep, that's good.
Should be good. Otherwise, our review times are good, remain good, and we do look forward to having the new pay provider starting around the first of the year for the online payments. We're not sure exactly when that's going to switch, but it's likely going to be around the first of the year. The nice thing about that is previously or currently, we don't have the ability to negate somebody's payment when they do it wrong. We have to call the provider now and they have to reverse it. Going forward with these new folks, we'll have the ability to reverse that ourselves and save ourselves a lot of trouble. And that's the main thing, main nice thing about it.
I noticed one of the commercial permits, that National Design Mart Rooftop Solar, 1.3 million?
Yes.
Boy, that's huge.
It is. That's a lot of solar panel and a long time to get your return back.
Yeah.
But I guess, you know, there's several like that have done that over the last, this course of this year. Had very similar ones this year and last year.
Well, that national, there was that incentive with the Inflation Reduction Act that they probably are banking on.
Taxes and incentives, yeah.
Taxes and incentives and rebates also, yes.
But that's still huge, wow.
Yeah, it is, yes it is.
All right.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Ben Now, our EMA Director.
Good morning. So a few of the highlights of the projects, some we've been working on the past three months. The radio tower project, that's to put up a new radio tower in Seville that'll have both the Harris Radio System and Amateur Radio Communications on it. It's still ongoing. EMA received a $200,000 grant to go towards that, so we've been working with Chris and the sheriff on that project, trying to move it forward. The mitigation project at Seven Springs Dam, the next step of that was submitted to ODNR. It was like their next step of the application process, so we're still waiting to hear back from the ODNR review on that, but hopefully that continues to move forward. The mitigation plan update is ongoing. Again, that's covered by the brick grant, the payroll to accomplish that, so that'll be done next spring sometime. We just started working on a volunteer reception center exercise for this spring. That's in conjunction with the Health Department for the EMA volunteers along with the Health Department volunteers. They actually applied for a grant for a contractor to facilitate that, so we'll see if they get the grant, they'll take the lead on that, if not, we'll just do it in-house. The dive training is still partially ongoing. The public safety diver class that we initially talked about, that's complete as far as the classroom and the pool sessions. So that initial group has gotten through that, that initial training. We're going to continue on with the med dive training, which is the EMS side of dive rescue for dive emergencies, as well as the dive rescue one, which is the next step up in that training series this winter. And then both of those will go to the open water sessions in the spring after the weather gets nice. So that's still on track to have an operational dive team this spring sometime. The confined space exercise, we completed that with Liverpool wastewater treatment plant. That was a culmination of the trainings that they conducted with the county risk managers with all the plants this summer. We had an exercise at the plant, basically simulating a worker that was trapped down in one of the tanks, all the way from the 911 call all the way through the rescue. So they rescued one victim, and then our team rescued the other victim. So there's some pictures at the end of that exercise. So they actually invited people from all the different plants, it was a good day. You have a list of incidents for the last quarter. A few things to highlight there, the rope rescue, the horse rescue in Hinckley, that was actually the second horse rescue of the year, which is not normal. We've never had a horse rescue before, and we had two this summer, so you have some pictures of that too at the end. The fire at Walmart, the arson fire, I'm sure you're aware of that, that was something a little different for us to respond to. We provided election support to the Board of Elections on Election Day. So year-to-date, we're at 51 incidents, but other interesting, we haven't had an incident since mid-November, so it's kind of, yeah, an odd month, I guess. So the current grants are listed on the bottom of that page. Remaining, we have the $200,000 in the Homeland Security Grant, $27,000, that's due, that's for next year's hazmat training, so there's a list of like eight different classes that are included in that grant. That includes both fire and law enforcement and dispatch training. The brick grant, we still have $23,000 for the mitigation plan. The emergency management performance grant, we're still drawing down on this current year, which is $52,000. And then we've got, received the award for next year, which is, will be $96,000, which we've continued on this decrease for quite a few years now. You'll see it's a $12,000 decrease from fiscal year '23 to '24, so that grant continues to go down from the federal level, trickle through the state then to us. The list of team members is on the next page, so total members that we have on all the different disciplines. We have 23 members on the Communications Unit, 12 on the Community Emergency Response Team, so both of those are EMA volunteers directly. And then the hazmat team has 29, water rescue 27, trench rescue 8, fire investigation 17, rope rescue 22, and structural collapse has 14, few members. Any questions?
It's helpful to have that count, thanks, I think that's a new part of that.
Yeah, that'll be on the executive board too.
Do you get any feedback on the FEMA money in terms of, did the fact that we needed an extension to draw down impact that reduction?
Not at all, no. That's, the extension is through Ohio EMA directly.
Oh, gotcha.
So they had no problem giving us that. The federal, at the federal level, those grants just keep going down and down.
Just a steady reduction.
Homeland Security, EMPG, those are all just, continue to go down, so.
Yep.
We'll see what happens in the future with them, but.
Is that, is that population-based nationally, and then as Ohio comparatively doesn't grow like some of the others, that essentially just reduces the total?
I'm not sure what the national formula is. Within the state of Ohio, they have a complicated formula, county to county. It's based on the risk index and population and a bunch of different factors, but at the national level, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, very good. Hey, thank you. Commissioners' Resolution, we have a resolution appointing a member to the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities. This would appoint Deborah Bachmuller to the DD Board to serve for a period of four years, for a term expiring December 31st, 2028. Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
We interviewed Deborah, and I think she did a great job. We have one other open spot that we have to fill an appointment on, which we will either, I think we'll have done before the end of the year or sometime shortly thereafter, so. This is just one of the two spots.
Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Thank you, all right. Jeremy, do you have anything else?
That was it.
Super, thank you, thank you so much. Matt, do you have anything? Okay, Colleen?
No, just excited that we're moving forward with a long-awaited Fair Board project, so we're very excited about that.
Good, good.
I have two updates from last Friday's NOAACA meeting. First, and there was some discussions, some coverage in it in today's Gazette along with an article over the weekend, but there's still a push, kind of a last-ditch, last-second push for the State House to get the repeal of the interchange vote to the floor. There's been some implications to that, that it might not happen, and at some level, it seems NOAACA factors into that, so among my comments at the NOAACA meeting last week was asking that perhaps-
Hey, thank you. Commissioner's Resolution, we have a resolution appointing a member to the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities. This would appoint Deborah Bachmuller to the DD Board to serve for a period of four years, for a term expiring December 31st, 2028. Move to approve?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
We interviewed Deborah and I think she did a great job. We have one other open spot that we have to fill an appointment on, which we will either, I think we'll have done before the end of the year or sometime shortly thereafter. So this is just one of the two spots.
Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right, this, we have a resolution reappointing a member to the Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. This appoints Jim Gersbacher, reappoints him since he was, already had been serving in that capacity for the term of January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2027. Would point out that our original resolution, I think, had given him a longer term. Their bylaws changed to essentially rotate every year. There's essentially commissioners will appoint one person, and they're three-year terms. So this aligns with that economic development appoints also one person every year. And then that, those six, appoint another person every, every year. So basically, we have a rotation of everybody every year. So and it's just thanks to Jim Gersbacher for being willing to serve. Move to approve?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. And this designates the official representative and alternate for the purpose of voting at the annual meeting of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio in 2025. Appoints myself as designated as the official voting representative and Commissioner Aaron Harrison as the alternate. Move to approve?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
Just like to thank both of us for our service.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Not hard to do. It's just once a year for that, that one particular, yeah. All right. Appointing representatives and alternates to the Northeast Ohio Area-Wide Coordinating Agency, NOACA, for 2025. This represents the, we have representatives and alternates for the commissioners, Aaron Harrison as the representative, me as the alternate, engineer Andy Conrad, and then the alternate is Bethany Dentler. Townships, Jeff Brandon for Motville Township was nominated by the Township Trustees Association last Thursday at their meeting. And for municipalities, Paul Magavak, Brunswick City Service Director, as the representative, and Matt Hiscock, City of Wadsworth, as the alternate. Move to approve?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
Just glad not to see my name on here.
Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. Next week, just have a notice of a liquor permit filing. Commissioners received notice of a new liquor permit request from 160 Glenshire Lane Consulting LLC, doing business as Roadside Inn, located at 640 Lafayette Road, Lafayette Township. This is for a D5 permit class. The commissioners are not requesting a hearing, and this notice is just being provided for the record. All right. With that, we'll open up to public comment. Name of the public? Okay. Hearing none? Discussion session? Okay. Jeremy.
I got a email from the Parks District's consultant regarding Wolf Creek project that they're working on. They are installing a, we talked about, I think about a year ago, I want to say, about them installing a parking lot just south of our lift station over there on State Road. There was no issues with that. I think they're getting into the design part of this. And as part of this, I think they need a permit with the Army Corps. And the, since the commissioners own the property, the property needs to have a representative to assist in the permitting of that Army Corps permit. And they reached out to me and asked if I would help them with that, since I'm already set up in the system. I just wanted to get your approval that if you're okay with it, there is no cost to us. It's just more or less me submitting some things through their website.
Yeah, we have a representative from the Park District here.
Yeah, my name's Ken Stray. I'm the new-ish Deputy Director of the Park District.
Okay. All right. And the question came along that this involved in an ARPA-funded project for access there. Is that correct?
Correct.
So this is now moved into two phases? You want to come up if you don't mind? Sorry, we just need to make sure the.
Yeah, understood.
Our audience. Okay.
So it's not really in two phases. We're kind of doing it in multi-phases, but not really identifying them as separate phases. That just has to do with the permitting through the EPA and the Army Corps and how we're able to get those kind of moved along quickly to get the project underway. We have to be under construction before the end of the year to utilize those funds. So that.
And our appropriations are all good for ARPA?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So at this point, just asking for permission for you to go ahead and help assist them for the signature and the permitting for the park area. Okay. All right. Do you have any issues with that?
None.
Congratulations on your new job.
We're good.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. Jeremy, do you have anything else?
That was it.
Super. Thank you. Thank you so much. Matt, do you have anything? Okay. Colleen?
No, just excited that we're moving forward with a long-awaited Fair Board project. So we're very excited about that.
Good. Good.
I have two updates from last Friday's NOACA meeting. First, and there was some discussion, some coverage in it in today's Gazette, along with an article over the weekend, but there's still a push, kind of a last-ditch, last-second push for the State House to get the repeal of the interchange vote to the floor. There's been some implications to that, that it might not happen. And at some level, it seems NOACA factors into that. So among my comments at the NOACA meeting last week was asking that perhaps NOACA would reconsider its prior authorization of the traffic study on the basis of if that's the mechanism by which the General Assembly chooses not to move forward with the repeal. That really wasn't the logic that NOACA had in approving the study in the first place. So I suggested that. I think it's going to be on the agenda in the January meeting, but the benefit is by then we'll know what happens with the repeal effort. We also might know if the repeal doesn't move forward through the end of the lame duck session. I believe before, NOACA meets in January, the new session will have convened and there could be legislation that gets reintroduced in January around that, too. But everybody's focus right now is trying to get the legislation to proceed at this week. You know, it's made, it's made its way through, kind of wound through the committee process and everything else, so we'd like to see movement on that. So that's one update. The other one was there was another vote on climate action plan. This one had specific greenhouse gas reduction target numbers in it. And I had asked just some clarifying questions in the presentation on that part of the meeting, because that's been a specific concern, I know, to this board and also a lot of our residents in Medina County. And as part of the questions that I asked, you know, I'm particularly concerned about how agriculture fits into the process. But most notably was, it was confirmed by both NOACA staff and Grace that there are no enforcement mechanisms in any of this. And so in light of that assurance, we voted in support of it. But it is something I want to continue to keep my eye on, because today's recommendations become tomorrow's regulations, and that's something I'm always, I'm always leery of when it comes to NOACA or any other regional body where we don't, we don't have autonomy in the room. So just want to make those two updates.
Yeah, a quick question on the greenhouse gas, the, I guess, the goals. Are those measured or are those estimated based upon reports, various sources?
I would love to have a direct answer to that, because so many of their targets are based on modeling and estimates. They have a target of, I think they ended up at 39% or something like that by 2030. And the amount that they had to push for is essentially prescribed by federal government guidelines. So they were in line with that. But as part of the process, they had to go back and look at 2005 emissions data. But in going back to look at 2005 emissions data, what they did, because we don't have data from 2005.
Yeah.
We have to project backwards. So we start essentially with projections from, because the 2018 numbers, some are gathered and some are projections themselves.
Right.
So we start with the initial 2018 data, some of which is already modeled, and then work backwards on a model. So then we can work forwards from there to decide what our goal should be in 2030. It's a lot of, I think, I think some would call it voodoo math, but it is a really interesting exercise to come up with. I mean, the number they came up with, I think, was 39.9%. And so for a system that's based on so many projections, I don't know why we couldn't have just rounded it to 40.
Yeah.
Because for as scientific as everything that goes into it is, 39.9 seemed like a very specific number. And there was a push in the room to, they had, they had some, they had five scenarios of what they considered for recommendations. And what they identified were the science-based targets were, had a higher percentage reduction. And there was a movement, an amendment from the board to push for those targets, which I think had a closer to 60% reduction target. And that amendment did fail in a roll call vote in the room. I think it was, you know, 30 to 5 or something like that. So we had expressed some interest that, you know, we were inclined to pass it as proposed on the basis that there was no enforcement mechanism. But, you know, I just, I want to always make clear that that's not the same as us being eager or willing participants in the whole process. I find the whole thing to be somewhat baffling.
So just so I understand, the projections of the reductions that they're targeting, those are for all five counties?
Yes, that's a regional target.
Not just the urbanized areas of the.
Right. And the.
Because all the rural area counts.
Right. And the, but the targets are being incorporated, the regional targets are being incorporated into the planning document that's being authored or has been authored by the City of Cleveland's Sustainability Department, or I don't know if that's the right title. So that's where the, that was my other point of clarification, because the original round of approving a priority action plan, which we did sometime earlier in the year, was to unlock certain funding to allow the City of Cleveland to move forward with the plan. Once they received that funding, which they already have, they were permitted to move forward, or they were required to move forward with this comprehensive plan that has the regional targets in it, which is why it was important to me, just to clarify, that those targets are all well and good, but are not, there's no enforcement mechanism in the plan where the City of Cleveland Sustainability Department's going to be coming down to Medina County. Because the same data they're using is the data we've previously found fault with, where per capita, it looks like Medina is one of the worst offenders.
Right.
And so that, you know, there's a lot of, we've already spoken about all those questions we have, too, so.
Well, no doubt, there's a good chance a lot of this is going to change with the changes to national policy.
Which is the other reason I wanted to.
Next year, too.
Right. The other reason I wanted to get, you know, clarify that that isn't, there isn't a mechanism of enforcement, because I do, I do worry about that. But I also, I know the tides are probably turning a little bit, too, on those, on those programs.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay.
Have energy for you.
All right. The one I, item I wanted to bring up is through the America 250 Ohio Commission, the Semi-Quinqucentennial, they have a program, Heritage Trees Planting History. It's a statewide project. Every county will be receiving a commemorative white oak tree for the county and being, to determine where we want to plant that tree. I have discussed, had discussions with Barb De Zer over the City of Medina, whether we would be interested in having it placed over on the square, an uptown, uptown park. Makes sense. It has to, wherever, wherever it's planted, they have to make commitments for long-term commitments of, you know, protecting the tree, making sure, you know, as proper nutrients and protection from the elements. So I think if you're in agreement, I'll let them know that.
Yes.
Okay.